It's part of. No, okay, she does not have it. Welcome everyone to the September second, two thousand twenty five meeting of the Portsmouth School Board. Nice to see Eric Moore back, our teacher representative, giving us an update on how the first day of school went, how the first few days. Thank you. Um, and I guess we can take the role.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie, Tish Campbell, here Nancy Flaver, here, Pip Clues. Yeah, Brian, is one of those good? Can't breathe.
I'm just trying.
Bottom.
That's very small. Allow her to talk.
No, I want to promote it to panelists. Okay.
So says allow to talk though.
Be, yeah, she'll be bouncing.
There you go, he's over there.
Okay.
Hello, I'm here, thank you.
Hey, here, Brian French.
Here.
Lee Hudson. Byron Mato. Harry Nolte, here, Lisa Rappaport, here, Eric Moore.
Here.
Nathan Delaney.
Oh, Nathan texted me, he's at a soccer game with the high school in Nashville, so. Sorry, he's missing a meeting, but he he'll be here next time, as long as he doesn't have to stop taking any questions. Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands my nation, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next section is public comments. A minute, did you want to speak? No one's here, do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Nobody there anymore.
It's just those, you know, those two.
Okay. So we have no one for the public comment, I will take and close it. Um, now as we get going on to whole business. We are here tonight to talk about the consideration and approval of the information technology change posed by the city of Portsmouth. Do you want to talk about this with your audience, Alex?
Um, I can, I could talk a little bit about it. Basically, the paper that you have in front of you, uh, I think we've got kind of three versions, the, I think the middle version is. The city is proposing the change B, uh, where that's. Item out of operational efficiencies lined out. Uh, I think the top one is what we originally proposed.
No, the bottom one.
The bottom one is?
Yeah.
Uh, yep, that's right, the bottom one is, uh, we really, we wanted to add to it. And then, um, this was something that the, the top part is what the police commission. Um, reached out to us and, and said, uh, what about this as a joint statement between the school board and us? And talked about, uh, information technology and human resources bumbled in there together. So it's just, we're just gonna consider those three things, um, have a discussion and think about how we're gonna. Respond to this, uh, city council votes on it. Third meeting is Monday, I think. But I think at this point, they're, they're getting pretty close to either voting for it or not at this point. Um, so I think, you know, whatever we say here, you know. Play the, hear what we have to say, hear our message. I just leave it up to discussion and discuss. Decide, want to support the city councils change or take this quarter. A change or, um, something along the lines with what the police mission is.
Police reached out to me and Zach and asked if we would meet with them to talk about this, so last week we did that and Brian was able to come. But we talked about, um, the change and Buzz, who is the, uh, police commission chair, no, he's not the police.
Excuse me.
Uh, this commission chair couldn't be there, um, but Buzz was there and he's the one that drafted this first paragraph that you see. And, um, the police commission has approved this, uh, paragraph. And if we approve it, obviously I will let him know and we will. I guess jointly go to the city council meeting on Monday and talk about how we both support the first paragraph. If that's what we decide, so we have to talk about that.
Yeah, their, their first paragraph basically say. There's no need for, uh, in ordinance that we could just have a MOU or. Somehow agreement on standard operating procedure of how parties would work together with IT. Which is what I originally had mentioned, I think that was probably more appropriate thing instead of, um. Using a strong language, and I think he did mention in there that he thinks this is, you know, a dramatic change in practice. Uh, because of, essentially, we, you know, from the school board's perspective. Having the IT. City does, um, in this case, having line up authority over one part of our budget. Sort of, uh. Goes against what the city charter actually says for our charter department, which is, we have line up authority. Along with, uh, so that doesn't jive, still have an ordinance. Kind of, um, against what's actually. And it also doesn't jive well with the current laws in your answer for school boards, which says, says we maintain, uh. High degree on top of it. So. Um, I don't think it's, you know, I think the idea of the IT, you know, cybersecurity thing is an important one, and I think. I don't think anybody disagrees, it's an issue that we should, uh, you know. Embrace the idea of having, um, this department and this, um, resource. Think the only, where we're sticking is where sort of the buck stops in terms of line item authority. Thanks, that's probably the sticking point for the school board. Uh, beyond that, I believe all the other things are fine. How other people feel about it, it's kind of where I was landing, we're sticking.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Carrie, can you just walk me through these three items again, just so I make sure I understand where they're coming from?
So the first one is really, um, drafted by the police mission, they wanted to. Basically draft a joint statement, basically opposing ordinance completely. Saying that there's another way to kind of. Have a good relationship, but also keep the spirit of having an IT department and. Having things managed cybersecurity, either through, through an MOU, or they call it S of a standard operating procedure. Just what the police department uses. I think the last one was our, our petition. By me. Middle one is what the city's second proposal, where their change was from their original language.
Comments or questions?
I'm, I'm just trying to get my head around sort of the options, so essentially the options are, we can. Essentially assume, do nothing and assume that the legal department suggestion changes are true. You can sign on with the police. Commission in a joint statement that just generally opposes this. Or we could. Stick with the number three. Or we could do something else.
Yeah, I think. Three options. Open for discussion. Really, at the end of the day, it's a recommendation to the, the city council, what we, what we all voted on, will vote on together and. Joint recommendation of what we do, uh, what we suggest.
And, you know, just say, my understanding is formally, that vote doesn't have any power.
It's just, just knowing that we're all in one, yeah.
And this is a position, I think, I would assume. You know, in a situation like this, the city council would be. It'd be nice for them if, if everybody was in line.
Lisa, did you?
Sorry, do we know what the precedent is for this type of dialogue around ordinance? Like, I'm just wondering if there's any historical situations come up before that we know of, I mean, even. It feels like a very unusual situation to begin, because ultimately, the language goes to the council for approval, we can certainly vote tonight to voice our opinion. Have an opinion that's different from the language they're proposing. But if we go that direction of saying unanimously want something other than what they're considering. It doesn't leave us in a great spot in terms of. What happens next? Is there any avenue to do an MOU, or is there any history of going that route? In this type of situation?
Do you know of any? I, I don't.
Not in my time, I mean, this is my first.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
All any, I don't think.
Okay.
This happening. Wait for Byron.
Oh, yeah.
I was just gonna, um, just wanted to, we don't have it in front of us, but I do want to, maybe I'll just read aloud the current. Ordinance, uh, and just so we can understand, because there's the. In our, in our packet, there's the. In, in our talents. Information technology section is what is supposed to be proposed. I just want to give it some contrast to what's currently in ordinance now. I think that's important, um, so I'll just read aloud, which is, so currently under. One, one zero six H. Says, information technology department shall be responsible for acquisition, maintenance and coordination of all computer hardware. Software and related information technology for all elements of municipal cart government, including the chart, chart departments. Except that the chart department shall retain those information technology functions whereby law or practice or unique and specific. Practice are unique and specific to the particular target department. In its exercise of authority, the information technology department. Or a charter department as appropriate, shall secure prior approval from the finance department for all technology acquisitions. So I just want to call out, because I want to sort of draw contrast to the language that's there now versus what's being proposed. And I think what's most important is in the existing language. Um, it points out the charter department shall retain those information technology functions, which by law or practice are unique. Specific to the particular target departments. And that carve out doesn't seem to exist in the new language. Um, so I just want to call out this as like the, as a destination, just to be going in front of us. I think it's important context. The other, um, item I think is interesting in the existing ordinance. Is that it says, um. It exercises authority that information technology department. Or a charter department as appropriate shall secure prior approval. Um, from the finance department, so as appropriate seems to be salient in that language. Um, as opposed to, now they, they took out. The, it in the, in the new version. Which prior approval, but it still says in the language that's being proposed. The. Operate, yes, the CIO has authority to establish and ensure compliance with IT standards for cybersecurity, system resilience and operational efficiency. And to me, a little bit operational efficiency, I think speaks to, it's even crossed out. Fiscal responsibility, so what clarification there, which is it, operational efficiency or fiscal accountability? Is it the one that's here in front of us, or is it the one that's in packet?
Can we defer to Trevor to answer that question? Do you all know Trevor, he's with the city legal department? And Ryan is the. He's the, he's a CIO person.
So it is, it is operational efficiency operating.
Okay, so it's not. Byron, continue.
Um, right, so. The operational efficiency is a little squishy in terms of, maybe there's some. Ability to have agency against, um, you know, fiscal decisions for operational efficiency. Um, is something that just jumps out to me in the new language. Um, none of that really asked any questions or makes any discernment, that was just sort of framing of myself, yeah.
Do you have an opinion of what we shouldn't do? No pressure.
Yeah.
No, no pressure, it's all on you, Byron.
Um, I appreciate the changes, um. Specifically around like all technology and prior approval from IT, so I appreciate that. Um. And replacing, yeah, so. I still, you know, I agree with the, the police to some degree, that I'm not sure I understand the need for this. Um, I think, but I'm undecided at any moment anyway.
Do you have your name up again?
Yeah, I'm, um. Just struggling a little bit with. Was there a public work session? Related to the IT? Or was, or? Cause I'm, I'm just struggling with the. What was public and what was non-public, or, cause I know there was a couple topics and I missed some meetings.
So, so just in terms of walking this back, so my understanding of the public, there wasn't like a work session. Of the council, the council has a governance committee. And part of what they do is, um, one of the things they were in the midst of was doing a full review of ordinances connected to the charter. Uh, because of that process, I don't remember the date, it was been a long time since those have been fully reviewed and updated. So they're going, they're marching through, looking at those things through this governance committee, which I think meets on a monthly basis. So this conversation. I get pulled into that conversation, I mean. Uh, just because it was awareness that like this could have an impact on. A couple ways in which it may or may not have an impact on tool operations. So, um, so the governance committee, which is composed of multiple city council members. Uh, you know, think of it as one of our subcommittees, so the subcommittee of the council. Has been working through, trying to develop renewed ordinances, uh, in connection to the charter and its administrative section.
I, I understand that, I, my very specific question is. Was this discussed, was this change discussed between the school board and the council in a public session?
It's amazing that we all met when we had two subjects, you were not in attendance.
That was the. That was not as a non. Okay, I'm sorry, I just needed to understand.
With the cap, with the council.
Really about.
And the police. Yeah, the department. Around this issue, I think, if that's specifically what you're saying is no.
Okay, so I, I guess, um, my, um, just have to frame in. Different, in, in, that just helps me for framing, um, I, I guess that the biggest concern, and I, I do hear in, in what. Some of the, you know, response has been that this is like over the top and. This is, we're making it a big issue when it's not, I just. And, uh, there are so many questions that this raises around school board authority. Um, that I don't feel like, um, I understand, my, my primary concern is actually more. Um, the, the relationship of educational software and the fact that. We obtain a huge amount of resources for free as a K through twelve education. Contractor, as opposed to it being all city-led contracts, and I know that, again, maybe that's not an issue, and maybe that's all. Well and good, and it just depends on what email address we have, but I just think there's so many things that are unintended consequences that could come from this. I think that part of this. Falls on what I can only assume is an approach of, you know, a city manager as CEO and, you know. Superintendent is chief educational officer, and that is not based in state statute or law, and is absolutely. Um, goes against that, so. I understand this is, I, I mean, totally in support of IT infrastructure and cybersecurity, but. Why is really, so I would say at this point, I agree with the police commission joint statement. In being a part of that, um, because. It's. Um, the need has not been demonstrated, um, for this. There's a lot of, um, unknown risks that we. Will never be able to process until something like this goes through, um. And it just feels like in a broader approach of having. A CEO when that is explicitly not what our state school board statutes. Requires, so, um, I'll just throw that out.
So, I would just say, so in, uh. Meetings in the government. I've come back with a couple rounds of, of, uh, introducing. You know, RSAs at the state level connected to school boards, school board powers, and, um, and I think that there is a. I think, I think one of the things, I think, in the larger conversation, bigger than this, than just like this particular thing is. What is the legal relationship separately from IT? What is the legal relationship in the school board? The powers articulated for school boards in, um, in RSA is the charter. The unique, some of the uniqueness that is Portsmouth and Portsmouth's charter relationship with, with, um, state. Uh. And I think some of, I think what's been difficult through the conversation has been. Haven't been able to get to a real clear moment about what powers the school board. What, what, what powers do the school board retain from the existing set of legislations that legislation is in, that refers to school boards generally? And what powers are there if the city council decides they are there? Uh, and it's a little murky, uh, and, um, I think that, uh, but I think legal, the legal department has, has said repeatedly, they feel that. This is within the scope. Of. The uniqueness of Portsmouth's charter and the story behind it, there's a whole bunch of stuff behind that. Uh, I think what's not clear for me, one of the things we've been trying to look through is. If this is allowable. Then what else is also allowable under the same set of arguments? Uh, and if we can't clearly articulate why that is, then maybe we should slow down a little bit and have more conversation.
And, and I think the level of. Detail in this does not align with the majority of the city charter and, like, this is a very specific. Like, I could see this coming in if, like, we had some crisis situation where IT happened and. We were, I don't know, I just, I, it, I just don't get the, like, is written in the statement, so.
I just want to be, I would be really careful about being intellectually honest, because I think the, the. I think the conversation's a conversation, it's an important conversation, I think it's hard. But two, I think part of what the council would point to is that in two thousand, there was an amendment to the charter passed by the voters. Um, which talked about having a singular, uh, IT department and some additional powers for. So I think if you, to be fair to the argument, part of it, part of it is that that had occurred. People had spoken, but then we get into all kinds of conversations about what. What can the people through a charter change? Take, take, what can the, what can voters' polls take back in terms of charters and could you, you know, at one point? Like, that's a complicated set a lot too.
Not understanding what you're saying.
I know, it's hard, there's la, there's so many layers to it, and I think my concern, well, my concern kind of for you as a group. Um, cause, you know, superintendents, we're only here for a certain period of time. Then we move on, is that. Yeah, if we don't resolve the core issue about this, what is the legal relationship between the school board and the city council? Uh. I think it opens up a whole bunch of other potential issues, and, so anyways.
Lisa, did you want to say something else, and then Genevieve, did you want, oh, Genevieve?
I just had a question, I'm like, we had talked about fire police and where's fire, where does fire stand up?
Um, okay. They don't have a position, most of their, um. Infrastructure is state mandated anyway, but for IT systems, so it doesn't impact, that was a casual impression I received.
I, I think also they've already, they've already moved in the direction of having city IT services provide along with the department. Uh, but I, I think.
Yeah, different.
Throughout, throughout the conversation of the three charter departments. Um, schools and police have, have had the biggest concern, I think fire is not, for the most part, has not had an issue with that.
No, please, sorry, did you want to say something and then fire?
Yeah, I guess, I, one. Comment that I'm kind of trying to work through, I think like a lot of people, I'm not quite sure which is the best or worst forward. And very mindful of wanting to have a clear, you know, kind of. Power for the school board in terms of what's already given to us under state law and not have that eroded in some way unintentionally. But I'm also very conscious of wanting to have a collaborative relationship with the council. Ultimately, I think that's what's right for our students, our teachers, our city, and. Um, I'm curious to what extent. You might be able to speak, cause I think we had some big questions about how this would impact our ability to make tech purchasing decisions, or software or hardware purchases, or. You know, get a bunch of Chromebooks for a whole grade or a whole school, or deal with students who need specific tech for an IEP. That was discussed, I believe, to some extent, is there any way that we can speak to that in the public meeting, just so we're on the record with that? Is that something that, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just feel like that's not a conversation that's had in a public meeting?
Uh, I'd like to ask the school board if they would like to have Trevor Ward and Ryan speak. Oh, I'm sorry, no, that's right.
We're kind of going in a circle around this and.
Suspend the rules.
And we suspend the rules to allow them to just speak to from their perspective, I'll just switch operations in school district.
So that is. Okay, all in favor? I've got to do a roll of all.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie, yes, Tish Campbell, yes, Nancy Flaver, yes, Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yeah.
Byron Mato.
Yes.
Harry Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Robert, Brian, sorry.
Take care.
Go eat your dinner over there, cause people want to. Send you comments about it.
Luckily, I didn't bring my.
Better plan than me.
Then, yeah, um, all right, so thank you very much, um, and I'll, I'll give my answer kind of in, in two parts, if that's okay. First, I'll just give you kind of the straight answer from the way that I see it, and then I'll give you an example, uh, based upon what I know, given what I. And how I always have to do my job. Um, so the straight answer to what you're saying is, um, that, or for the example of IT. Um, the IT director would review any, any tech, um, procurement, any, any purchase that's under the, the IT umbrella, right? Um, subject to the criteria spelled out in work, right? Um, so the scope of his review would only be under the things that are subject to jurisdiction, right? Subject to his, his job title, subject to his area of expertise. Um, that would be, that'd be where he'd review it, and if there's some, some purchase which he believes, given his, his technical. Technical background, would pose some undue risk to, to municipal functions, to school functions, subject to this criteria, you know, he could then, uh. Have a conversation with the person or, or people who are trying to procure that, am I getting that right, Ron?
Yeah, that sounds like what. He was all along, right?
Right, yeah.
And so, uh, it usually doesn't. Usually we're talking about this thing over time, so it never gets to the point where like, something, something is like, absolutely needs to happen in, you know. But then there are things like licensing, it's like, well, you've been purchasing the same licensing for a really long time. We just need to get it right now, and it's not really a, a big thing, you know, and it's like, okay, I understand what this is, we do it all the time, we take care of it. Um, and then, you know, if there was ever, um. Large changes that involved like a lot of hardware that. large changes that involved like a lot of hardware that was new and unique, and then it might require more intensive discussions. And on my part to do research and understand exactly what the implications are. But those are the few and far between it, I would say. And I don't think those would be surprises. Those are things we would talk about well in advance.
And, and, you know, from, from my perspective in legal department, you know, this is part of a process which, I mean, municipal departments regularly engage in already with the school department. I mean, you know, I regularly work with Luchy, for example, on his construction progress. I mean, now Jennifer Smith in my office is doing that, but for, for a while I was doing it for a while before that. Suzanne was doing all that work. And, you know, we would work with Kenny as he was, you know, drafting a particular contract or working with a particular contractor to, to negotiate. And we would provide, you know, our advice and input on, on trying to create a contract that is in the best interest of the, the city and the school department both. You know, and where we weigh in is on things like indemnity clauses, which pose a financial burden for the city. Not on, you know, are we going to use asphalt or concrete? Because that's not within our scope, right? It's really, we're, we're trying to look at our resources and, and we have one school, we have one legal department in the city that services kind of everybody, you know. And I help all charter departments, I help all the, the non-charter departments, all the city to try and provide my advice and expertise. And that's the same that, that the IT department will be providing. And, and as was mentioned earlier, already provides every day to, to the fire department right now.
Yeah, we provide all, all the IT services to the fire department currently.
So they don't have any objection because this doesn't change anything for them, but just to answer that question.
Brian, Carrie Byron.
I mean, the way you said it makes sense. The only, the only thing in there is the authority also says operational efficiency. So all the other things like as far as technical competence and all that stuff and understanding cybersecurity, totally understand whatever is in front of you. But that sentence, I know you can find physical responsibility for, now it's operational efficiency. Just speaks to me like to help, you know, light eye. And I don't, and I, and I get what you're saying, like guys help out different departments. Usually it's by agreements, sort of agreement. I understand the reason to codify this more is because it's important. IT security doesn't string before. For the schools, it's important if we, uh, schools have been had before, but I think that's where we're heading it up. That is, it does say, he has, not just all of the IT standards, cybersecurity, system resilience, but operational efficiency. That's the basis of this problem, of what I have to be.
Carrie Byron. Um, I, I understand the, I understand the example, and that's helpful to think about, you know, the legal consult and the legal department. I guess I'm just wondering, like where, if you could provide any insight onto where this came from? Why is this appropriate for a city charter? Is there an example of where this has been done in another city? And, you know, sometimes policies are copied and pasted, or it's a best practice somewhere. Because it feels, it feels very much like the conversation was not had with the board. And that's part of where this, you know, concern is coming up. It's just that it, it feels like an overreach because it wasn't the need had, in my opinion alone, but my opinion, the need hasn't been communicated. And the open conversation has not been there to foster like a working relationship in the context of a city charter.
Sure. And, and just to answer one part of your question first, I'm not personally familiar with, I, I mean, I know that there's like three municipalities in the state that have a setup like Portsmouth, where there's a, a school department as opposed to a school district. And frankly, I'm just unfamiliar with, with the ordinances in, in Nashua, and I believe the other one was
Right, yes.
Rochester, thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm just not familiar with the ordinances and I apologize for that. I think part of the part of the unfortunate part of this really is that what we're trying to, what we're trying to implement here is a charter amendment which was passed 25 years ago. I mean, that's, that's really the issue with why you're, I mean, I understand why you're feeling the way you're feeling. And I think that's because there was a charter amendment which was passed 25 years ago and never implemented. And I mean, all I can
I'm sorry.
The, there was the charter amendment F, which was implemented in 2000. That's what the chair had, had referenced. And that's the charter amendment which calls for a singular IT department to manage, to service all departments, including the charter departments. So that's, that's part of the issue is that we're trying to implement this 25 year old charter amendment. I mean, if I could turn back time, I would, I would go back and ask them to, to do that all at once. But, you know, I, I, I wouldn't have been in a position to help them back then. So that's, that's kind of part of the issue. Another, another part here and, and the superintendent did a really nice job of, of trying to explain our position. But the way that, that I see the kind of the power, because the, the power comes from the people for, for municipality in New Hampshire. It comes from the people via the state to the municipality. That's, that's where power flows. Different states set it up differently, but that's how it works here in New Hampshire. And for Portsmouth, the, the, the people, you know, obviously they, they elect the leg, the state legislature. And there was an act of the legislature which, which empowered the city to establish a, a board of instruction back in the early 1900s, right? And so then that power goes to the voters of Portsmouth to be able to via the charter, because that's how municipal government is set up, is through a charter. They then set up, how is that board of instruction of school board as we have it now? How is that board going to be, going to be stood up and, and what powers are going to be, going to be allocated to it? And they had, what they did was they set up, given the, the unique nature, right, of a school board, they set it up as a charter department, a special department, acknowledging its special status and special powers. They set it up with, among other things, line item budget control, which is certainly important. The, the voters have then also in, in 2000, I mean, there have been other amendments, but in 2000, that's the the amendment that we're trying to implement here, which is that amendment that says that there should be one IT department that services all departments, including the charter department. So that's the way that I see the power flowing from the people through to the city.
You said amendment F, but it says human resources department for amendment F.
I'm sorry, did I reference the wrong charter amendment? I apologize.
Yeah, and that would be helpful just to get that because that's the first I have heard of that in this conversation. And although I'm familiar with some of the history around the board of instruction, that has not come up and it, or I just haven't understood it in that way in this conversation.
Sure.
I think Byron and then Tish.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Nancy. My question is around the operational efficiency that Brian had mentioned. And I guess my question to either, either Trevor or Ryan would be, what's an example of operational efficiency relative to compliance for IT?
So some that we talked, this is something that's come up, obviously. So we've talked about it and I kind of outlined some notes regarding specific language. So evaluating redundant systems and software licenses. So if we're buying two different things that are performing the same function, we should at least evaluate. I'm not saying that there might be a very valid reason to have two separate, you know, items doing similar functions because of the uniqueness of the school department. But it might make sense to evaluate and say, okay, this is why we're doing this. This is why we're doing that. And then maybe document that and say, okay, we could address this. And this is why we're, so if anyone else, you can say there's a legitimate reason to have these be unique. Streamline processes in terms of the complexity of different systems and being able to assist the different departments. So if during certain times of the year, you know, the seasonality of the school, there could be need to bring additional resources on to get some projects done, things like that. So by streamlining processes, you could be able to assist each other. Or in cybersecurity areas where, you know, we have a little more knowledge of what's going on at the different charter departments because we've aligned under certain frameworks. So we could help each other out if there was ever a cybersecurity incident. Resource optimization, so specialized tools or resources that we could use across departments that may be, you know, prohibitively expensive if we tried to purchase them in triple kit or, you know, across different departments. If we could purchase them in one larger purchase, service all the departments to save money. And then leveraging expertise, so being able to leverage, you know, engineering, cybersecurity, expertise that we wouldn't necessarily be able to purchase or be able to before and across the different departments. If we can get it in one, one place and then service the separate departments that way.
I, I appreciate the answer. So one question you mentioned potential seasonalities and additional resources that might be brought on to accommodate that. That sort of implies agency against personnel. Is that, is that implication there that the, that you would have authority around personnel across the different departments?
No, I was getting towards the, the processes by, if we're using similar processes, similar systems or similar, you know, ways of operating, then we would have the familiarity between the different departments to, to assist each other.
Okay. So additional resources wasn't referring to
Not people.
About people.
No, the reduced complexity so that potentially we could assist each other across strength.
Is there, do you, is there a, a situation where operational efficiency could be implied to mean personnel?
I think we've always talked that operational IT would remain the charter departments as far as day to day operations, that the charter departments retain their IT personnel and their IT management. And that they determine what's best for the charter departments in terms of day to day operations. Our focus was always on cybersecurity as the primary driver.
I appreciate the answer. Maybe to cover, I mean, is, 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 could it be implied with operational efficiency that that could be extended to personnel?
I mean, it's certainly not the intent of, of how it was drafted.
Okay.
And if I may, just circle back to, to Brian, as you're right, amendment F is, is human resources, which is also part of the amendment here, it's section 7.23, which was also adopted in 2000, that's called information technology. I apologize for, for being incorrect.
How did it get put in like that, not as amendment? That's very strange. I mean, it makes no sense. All the other ones are amendments, but this is like just shoved right in there.
Yeah.
I think it's Tish. Thank you. So I think one of our, what I'm grasping from what everyone's saying is our main concern with this is this, the school board, the school administration. I know it's not the intent of how this was written that are that we lose like control, I guess for lack of a better word, of, of what we're bringing into school systems for technology and such. However, if it's written in such a way, where I have to make my own, I'm not a lawyer. Down the road, 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, but none of us are here. Except for Nancy will still be here. I'll be in the office. What safeguards do we have that it's, it's that we still have a, or that the school board and the school department still has still has the lead in, in what is brought into the school system? Like, and what recourse would this, the school department have if that choice, again, lack of a better word, was taken away? And I, again, I understand that this is not the intent of, of how this is written now. I'm sure no one in the city council, legal department or anything, this is their intent. But as time goes by and things get redefined, what safeguards do we have in place that we're not losing power?
Okay. And, and thanks for the question. I mean, it, it certainly not lost on me. And I, I will put it, I'll give you an example, I guess. That's the way that I, I think about these things. So, so the school board still retains the line item control, right? You know, like right now, I mean, I, I review contracts for the departments, right? Jennifer Smith in my office reviews contracts for the departments, but we don't tell that other department, hey, you have to buy this and you can't buy that. We're most, we're looking through the, the agreement, you know, under our, under our rule of what we do. And we say, you know, hey, this, this, this exposes to risk and we get this, this clause taken out. And it's a, it's a balancing, right? There is, it's a work, we're working with the department to try and, you know, sometimes we have the negotiating power to negotiate things out, other times we don't, right? Or other times we may say, hey, you know, I mean, just because we touch so many different things, we may say, hey, you know, did you know this other department's working on this thing over here? Have you talked to them? Just put them in touch with each other, you know? But or unless something is so outrageously risky, you know, we'll just, you know, we usually will redline and, and work on it and try and help negotiate in the whole thing. But we may say, hey, this is a really big risk right here, you know? Have you, have you really thought this all the way through? Is this really how you want to, how you want to proceed? And that's, that's how we do it kind of in, in the real world. Now, if somebody like an IT director or a human resources director or anybody else in the city is violating your well, that's a separate issue, right? I mean, that's a separate problem. If somebody's exceeding the authority granted to them, you know, if, if, if Ryan is exceeding his, his, his authority in saying, no, you can't, you can't buy this, but you have to buy this other thing and stepping on your toes of your line item budget control. I mean, that's in violation of the ordinance. I mean, that's, that's kind of a separate issue.
So that is, that is certain.
He can say, he can say, he can say, no, you can't, you can't buy this because, you know, this is a, this, this purchase or this acquisition presents an unreasonable risk to the city and the school department. He, he could say that, but I don't think he can say, well, no, you have, you have to go and make this other purchase over here.
Okay.
I don't believe that's within, that's within the scope of this. And is that your understanding, Ryan?
Yeah, my understanding is that you would, if there was a disagreement about what we would spend money on, that you would retain the budget even if the money wasn't spent on a particular item. Like you wouldn't lose control of the budget.
Yeah, but that's not.
That's, yeah, that's not, no, no, that's not what she's saying. I'm sorry.
Can I talk?
Yes.
Okay, that's not what she's saying. Our, our, our concern is not us forcing, him forcing us to buy a certain piece of software over another. Our concern is him saying, no, you can't do it. And that's it. It does, it, it does create a power for him. It is in what, what they're not saying is an overreach. It's an overreach of power by one individual that wasn't an elected official, an elected position, which all of us were, allowing you to tell us, no, you can't do that. Because this is saying you have the power to reject line item, items that we are specifically saying. Because it's, it's not that, it's not that we think that that's what you're doing. But what it does is it creates an opportunity for you to do just that. If there is something that we really think is appropriate, one of the teachers wants to fight for, whatever it is. It's an overreach where we're not the ones making the decision of whether or not that line item is a requirement. You are. That's the concern.
Let's, let's back.
So I was just gonna say, the legal department example is exactly how it works. So it's, you know, we send up contracts to check, get advice back about, hey, here's the risk, here's what you're gonna do. And but in that relationship, at least is my understanding, so not in the charter and not in administrative ordinance, does the legal department have the written authority to say, don't, you can't do that.
Yep.
Hey, we go through a process through the advice to say, you probably don't want to do this. And here's why. And here's, you are, you are introducing a whole bunch of potential liability. You're taking a real risk here that if something bad happens, that we could get sued as a result of, result of that. And, and we really value the, the opinion that we get.
Hundred percent.
Do it very carefully. But it is not, it's not codified.
Yeah, it's not a decision.
There's a no.
Yes.
Ultimately, you know, those are decisions that was tied and the people who work beneath me given power from you to do things, make decisions with, under that advice. So I think what's different about this potentially, and I think you're on it, is that this codifies the ability to say no.
Yep.
And that's different.
That's problem. That's the problem.
And, and whether it's
I'll take advice all day.
Yeah. And so I think that's the, I think that's the thing that we're, we're, you know, and other thing I'd just say as a secondary thing is if, if the only powers, if the, if the argument is that as a result of the creation of a board of instruction in 1895? 1905, no, 1905? Is that that then basically gave the power to the voters to determine what this elected school board is going to be able to do or not do. And that is strictly, if, if And that is strictly, if, if it's strictly rooted in the charter. There's only a couple of things you do in the charter, but there's a whole bunch of things we assume you do based on RSAs that aren't, that's not in the charter, that we assume you have power under the RSA and you function in that way. Um, and I think that's where we get into this really interesting kind of question. It's about what, what powers do you have depending on the interpretation of, of this other stuff? Can maybe, and if, and we can't clearly, I feel like, no, no, we can't. I haven't yet, I've had awesome, great conversation, Trevor and I have some amazing conversations. I'm very thankful for, for, um, all the dialogue, I have different people in the legal department. But I can't articulate to you, based on this set, the arguments that are being used around this, what else we believe you do or don't have powers to do. And I think that's problematic, um, that we don't have an answer to that question.
And I think that's our fear.
Yeah.
Um, I think ultimately that's our fear is, and it's, and again, it's not you at your position twenty years down the road. Um, again, it's, it's not anyone's intention, but again, down the road, what has happened to define major being taken away from making, of making those decisions? And again, it's, it's no one sitting in this room, I'm just looking at down the road and, and things being fuzzy, um, right now and not clear. How is that gonna be defined twenty years from now?
Yeah, I mean, another, another thing, I mean, it is interesting, the legal example, because nothing in our charter says anything about legal, how legal works with, with the school department, and yet it works well, right? And you, and you, and you just outlined it. So you think about it like, what, what's the, there could be rationale to make another ordinance or another amendment that have, what, you know, um, this function also incorporated into the charter may codify in a certain way. But I would say that, you know, all, all contracts are great until the fuzziness, you know, until there's something, you know, um, going on, there's some issue going on. And then everybody starts to picking apart the fuzziness and saying, who has what, right? That's really when it all falls apart. And I think that's what the, what we're trying to articulate here is like, or this is, find out who's been swimming naked when the tide goes out. It's whenever you, it's whenever things get really hard, that's when you realize who's not really, you know, who's pretending, who's, uh, not pretending. But I guess my point is, I don't like the fuzziness of this. I like the idea of it, you know, looking at the city charter, I don't like that either, that was adopted in two thousand. Um, in some ways I like the language of the, um, of the ordinance over what's in the city, uh, city charter, except for the fact that it does say, um, you know, operational efficiency. That line was out, I feel a lot more comfortable about all of this, to be honest with you, because I do believe that this is an important decision for the city. Um, and also is loaded on, um, at one point in the two thousands. Uh, but I guess that's what I really might hang up, because I think if we do nothing, we still have that lingering in that section. Seven dot two three, which is even more nebulous about data, direct acquisition, maintenance, coordination. I have no idea. Sounds very nebulous to me anyways.
Read that, it's not long, is it?
No, it just says, it was adopted, and I'm glad you pointed it out, because I'm looking at the amendment, something like, where the heck is this? Uh, but seven two three says administrative coach shall provide that a single municipal department shall direct acquisition, maintenance and coordination of the information management technology for all elements of the city government, including the charter departments.
Okay.
Carrie, oh, you finished?
Yep.
I was just wondering if that was like a Y two K thing. But, um, so I guess, and, and I guess I just keep having like logistics and like, so like the consultation that was described with legal, love that, love that we have that. It's great. We even have some other consultants that we utilize and that have more specific education law. That is just not what the, um, the charter amendment says to me. Um, as sort of the openness around like, oh, we can help during diff- difficult times. Then I'm wondering a whole slew of other things, like are, are city IT staff having background checks and fingerprinting before they're in our schools? Do we have, like, there's just so many little bits. Um, are we open to liability around, you know, not providing adequate services, um, delineated in IP because the technology didn't get approved? Or, you know, the technology that was put into the plan, you like, like, do we need a technology person in every IP meeting to make sure what's in there is gonna be compliant? Like, it, my mind's going, clearly, all of this is like fear mongering, but, um, but I think, I think my more, the, the piece of like the line item control is actually more, my concern is that this generates line items the, for the, for the school department that would prioritize an infrastructure for the city under the school budget. And so if, you know, the way that this was introduced to us was hurriedly like, you have to put money for a position into your budget. So that was an overreach in my mind. Um, and all these departments are gonna support a part of this, this, this position in our budget. So then if we want to like have server farms in the city of Portsmouth, then do we then have, like, do we take, well, you guys have, you know, five thousand students, so you're gonna take ninety-five, ninety percent of that budget item, and this is important for cy- cybersecurity. Point of the story is, still not supportive of this. Keep having more questions the more we talk about it, which in my mind is just evidence that this shouldn't be a charter amendment at this point. Um, the collaboration can be done through MOUs. There can be all sorts of different contracting that leaves the superintendent as the supervisee of the school board, who is elected to make those, to enact those MOUs, to develop those relationships in a collaborative way instead of what this feels like is just a, a heavy-handed like forcing. And I think that makes us all like skeptical and suspicious. And I know that's not the intent of, or like I, I hear little clips, but I don't think from the city perspective, the logistics have been thought out and the impact on our students have been, have been vetted. And it will be a longer process to do that, so. I don't know, Nancy, what, if, I don't know if people are at a decision-making point, I think my going on to this police commission, um, um, statement, um, of joint opposition to this at this point, um, with hopes that all of the, this collaboration and stronger cybersecurity can occur um, through MOUs and through the channels that we already are using and should be using better to make sure that we're as secure as possible.
Byron?
So I, I think I'm, I'm, I think I'm closer to Brian on this, which I think if operational efficiency was not in the language, that it would, it would jive with what's in seven dot twenty-three in the charter for me. That's, um, that's where I am with it.
Uh, can I ask a question? What is system resilience? What does that mean? Who twenty words?
Quite, she said, in twenty words.
Oh, yes.
System resilience, uh, referring to uptime. So we wanna keep things highly available so that we don't experiencing long periods of downtime where systems are down unavailable.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other, uh, we, we heard from Carrie, uh, any other, oh, and Byron, so Byron, are you support, are you saying that you want to recommend to support these or?
So the way, the way I'm looking at this is like, the charter says what it says around seven twenty-three. So the administrative coach shall provide a single municipal department that shall direct acquisition, maintenance and coordination, coordination. I don't get from that. I think the stuff that's in the, what's the word? Not an amendment, it's an ordinance. The, the words that are in the ordinance, um, I think are, for me, and I'm sure Trevor Joyce, non-linguist, deciding what language, uh, is compliant or not, but the, the, um, feels okay to me, other than operational efficiency, because I, it, I think it does imply things that can be used in other envi- like in other times, in other councils, in other scenarios. Um, it seems overly broad and potentially like a, a, a thing to lean on when you want to, you know, frankly, just like move personnel away. Um, so that's, um, that's my biggest objection. Other than that, I, I think it's, I, I'd be okay with it, but, um, yeah, I think, uh, yep, that's right.
Anyone else?
Agreed with Byron on that one.
Um, I have a suggestion. How about if we do what Byron and Brian, uh, suggested? But then we add the last sentence of the change suggestion. Uh, we believe that coordination of functions coming to the charter departments and city departments can be mutually welcome mutually agreed on the SOPs is what the police use and the MOUs or what the schools would use. So just to make it clear how we would communicate to people think that's necessary.
I feel like the city, the city council would see that as a big departure from the language they already have. They would like to just dismiss it anyways, but if we can propose something small, then is it compromised? Maybe they'll consider it.
I, I don't think they've listened to any of our proposed amendments though. So I guess that's my, I think if, if it's okay, I would, I'd like to move to, to join the joint statement first, um, if, I mean, obviously it's.
Before you do that, I do have a, just a question, if you were putting that up on the floor, it's a, it's a thing. I just, I have a question, just a clarify, clarification question. With changing or taking out the operational efficiency as, as Byron and Brian had proposed, we are following the, um, the, the amendment, was it the amendment that was brought out in two thousand that the city voted on? That the resident, was, is that called amendment? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the amendment, the charter amendment. Year two thousand.
So we, we basically have to follow what the city had said, even though it was twenty-five years ago. That was still a mandate by the city telling us that we needed this in, in place, correct?
It was the voters.
Do you want to mark out, so?
I know more complications.
I, I think, so I think, I think there's, so I, I trust that people admitted what we did at the time. I think there is a question around case law that people have quoted about what the voters have the ability to seize through a charter.
Okay.
Uh.
A social studies teacher, why?
As a studies teacher, and I think the stuff, so I think the stuff is interesting, but I also think it's, I think it's, we're not, we haven't been able to answer this question core, which is separate from IT, separate from HR. What powers either through city council ordinance? So if you look at the RSA, it's the map to what most school boards are able to do. What things are you elect, are you, what powers do you still have? Are those powers only granted to you via a charter amendment from the citizens of Portsmouth?
Okay, twenty-five years ago.
Twenty-five years ago, or, you know, so is anything that's not listed in the charter, not a power you have? There's a whole bunch of powers that school boards have that are in our states. Um, so if you not have any of those powers, except for what people grant you in the charter, which is not much, um, but you do a bunch of things that are in alignment with our states. Although you have operational control in the charter, but what does that mean? It's all broad. Um, so, and can, if that's not totally clear, what can the city council through ordinance and not a charter amendment also further take away from you? And I think those, I think we're not, I think that, so for me, outside of IT, the fact that we really can't clearly answer that question and haven't been able to over a seven-month period of time is interesting.
Okay.
And, um, and so, so, so for me, this is like the tip of the iceberg in a bigger conversation. I wonder, how, where do you, where do you, where do your powers come from? And how are they limited and how are they not limited? Um, and, um, and I think that the fact that I, so I can't advise you to do something where I can't, I don't under- I, I don't understand what the answer to that question is. And I haven't heard somebody explain it to me in a way I understand, where I could say, I support this concept. And I can, and I advise you, yep, absolutely within the power of this, of the charter amendment process and or the process of creating, um, municipal ordinances for these things that appear in law for most boards are not for you. I haven't had anybody been, you know what I mean? So I want you, when you make that type of decision, I want you to be informed in a way, it's like, I get this.
Okay.
They explain to me in a way in which I understand it. I feel comfortable that I understand it, and either I feel comfortable and I, and I am like, yep, uh, we shouldn't have the ability to do, do these other things, uh, or nope. Uh, that you at least feel comfortable with what that is in the context within what you, what you're, uh, voting. And right now, I figure you probably aren't, because I've been at this for months and I'm not there yet. Uh, and so, um, so anyways, that's the, that's, I think the rub for me.
Okay, thank you. That actually wasn't complicated.
I try and, civic seizure law office, trying to figure.
Not twenty words till last sentence.
No, I, it was never, it's, I apologize.
All right, sorry to have interrupted you, Carrie. I just wanted that clarified before, if you were putting something on the floor.
Yeah, I think I, I, I mean, if that's okay with you, that would be my preference, Nancy, but it's up to you if, if you wanna defer and modify that language.
May I chime in for a moment? I've had my hand up for a while. Um, thank you. Um, I, uh, just before Byron spoke, actually, I was going to say that I, I agree very much with Brian um, and Byron as well, that I don't feel comfortable with that, that wording in the last line. Um, but, um, I also think at this point I'm with Carrie on the fact that I'd prefer to join the police department, um, in their statement. So I just wanted to put that on the table before we go much further, because I, I had thought that's where most people were leaning, but it sounds like maybe we're half and half at this point.
Thank you, Pip. Um, yeah. Carrie, do you wanna make a motion? Sure, I will, um, motion to join the police commission in the joint statements, um, related to opposing the information technology-related charter amendment.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Okay, second that.
Question?
Yes.
Right.
None of that.
Okay. Um, if the ordinances are not updated, the council would pass it, but if the ordinance are not updated with, um, the language is proposed, what material impact does that have relative to what the charter says?
Well, we, we as, we as a municipal government have an obligation to follow the charter. And my advice to the city council would be to implement an ordinance that e- e- either A, yeah, would be to implement an ordinance, uh, that, that complies with the provisions of the charter.
Hey. I will, maybe I will, I will remember that on, on a lot of stuff today, but, um, on, so I guess my question is, um, why does it have to be in ordinance as opposed to just existing in the charter?
Uh, well, because that's what the, that's what the charter amendment says. It says it should be, shall be implemented through the administrative code. It's just chapter one, the administrative code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Um, I guess I just wanted to speak to the motion on the table, because I appreciate that we have a lot of legitimate concerns about exactly how this will be implemented potentially down the line, what the unforeseen implications could be. But I also just, I don't love moving forward. It's something that feels to me like a little bit too combative a stance to take with the council. And I prefer us to try to come up with a collaborative approach to move forward with this. I don't know that we wanna have an ordinance that says that we're gonna draft MOUs, because that just starts to send us down a whole other rabbit hole of, you know, potential, what does that mean and for what? But I think in spirit, we seem pretty much agree that we wanna make sure that, you know, we can do lifecycle replacement on our Chromebooks as we plan and not have. You know, we can do lifecycle replacement on our Chromebooks as we plan and not have disruptions to that, that we can comply with special education plans for kids that. You know, the new software that we're implementing in our curriculum is not suddenly going to appear. To be something we can no longer use, you know, because that's not just an abstract. Changing out hardware or software, that's potentially disrupting curriculum, which is very clearly. The purview of the school department in a way that could mean that, you know, we're not teaching algebra in the same way, because there was a sophomore software reliant. Math curriculum, so. I feel more comfortable with the language that legal's proposing that removes operational efficiency. I don't have a good language proposal, but I wish there was a way to somehow. Flip to the idea that we intend to preserve the ability of the school department to. Handle curriculum and to meet the needs of individual kids. You know, and I doubt that you want to look at a single Chromebook or a single software plan for one kid with a specific disability, but the way this is worded. Hypothetically, that could happen. And I doubt anyone would have the time or patience to really drill down to that level. But it's a concern in the future. I don't have a good language fix for that, but I guess that's where my head is at with it.
Well, we have a motion on the table, um, to support the first paragraph here that we have. Um, should we vote on that? And then if that is not. Passed, we can work on language like Lisa just suggested. To. Add to the legal department suggested amendment, yes.
Quick question, Trevor, you can probably answer this. I think this is procedurally. The council, I think, I think I got this right, but I, I, I don't know if this is by practice or. Or by process, so. On the last night before accept, of, of accepting an ordinance. Typically, I know typically you said, Nancy, that there's no amending on that last night, like it's, like. The public has seen, this is the draft we're going to vote on, and here it is. So the, so the council's. So then the council's ability to think about another amendment would require the council to. Do that work in the upcoming meeting and then hold another meeting. To protect, and is that by, is that by rule, is that by charter? It is by, by charter.
You can't have any amendments.
You have to be.
After second reading, you can't. You'd have to go back, I mean, you, you can have, but you can't just pass it with everyone back and having a. The second reading is the critical, that's the critical step, so you'd have to have it, they'd have to have. Another second reading if there were any changes.
And we're on third reading, correct?
They're on.
It's just, it's just they couldn't. Look at this and pass it at their next meeting, if let's say you went with any, whatever, whatever it is. It would have to be another meeting after that to then have that codified and help inform the public before.
Again, I think the only reason I suggested just that one line change was to try to meet the council. Um, where they're at, I think, I think their heads are in the right spot in terms of. Needing to get this ordinance together around IT, just don't, I really don't like the last sentence. And, um, that was removed, that would make it softer for me and. Uh, make, make me feel more comfortable, uh, but I think. Pushing too much of a change probably won't have a good effect anyways. And they can vote with the way they want to in the end. But, uh, that was where my head was at.
So you would take out the operational.
I just think about the last, yeah, the last and. Whatever they want to say, financial or physical operation. Um, I know we're talking about this, but I'm just saying what.
Yeah, I mean, and, and if that's the approach the board wants to take, that's fine too. I just think that, I think. Where my concern is, is more like, let's vote on this. If this, I mean, there's no reason to wordsmith if we're going to sign on to the statement. So let's see if we're going to sign on to the statement, and then we can.
Shall we vote on the police commission in the school board jointly, um, the joint statement? Again, it was only Brian and I that were at the meeting, so we clearly stated that we couldn't. Speak on behalf of the whole board, the whole board had to decide, so. And you all know that, I didn't have to say that.
So we're voting on. Right now, the first paragraph, whether or not we're voting to support that.
Uh, the joint with the.
The joint with the police to, um, to acknowledge that the jointly, um, opposing of the change.
Can I say something that? Before I say yes or no to this, I would like to know what language we want to add to that. Because that will influence my vote.
And this is all I want to get right.
And operational.
I just say stomach resilience.
Okay, that's what, that's what you would suggest it to.
And just so I'm clear, so you would be requesting that city council. Modify at second reading, go back like.
I would ask him not to vote on the third reading, go back to.
Okay. All right, are we ready to vote on Carrie's motion?
Okay. Genevieve Beckstead-Musky.
Yes.
Fish Campbell.
Yes.
Nancy Flavert, no. Fifth clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
No.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Byron Rado. Carrie Alte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappport.
No.
Five yes, four no.
Right, it's the end of it.
It's the end of it, so. We will, uh, let the police commission know that, uh, the school board is. Supporting their, uh, state, well, the joint statement that we put together. We'll let the city know that that's the. Trevor, can you just pass it along?
I certainly can pass that.
We should talk to legal about this.
All right, so. Okay, everybody's thoughtful comments, and I know that you all. This was difficult. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate. What did you say? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Bring, bring your dinner. Thank you very much. Okay, you're welcome to save the rest of our meeting if you'd like. The door is.
Let's ask the door out. Ask some legal questions.
All right, well, the second item here that we're talking. Oh, no, let's move on to. All right, I'm turning it over to.
So, um, I just want to make sure you are informed, uh, this is something that. Uh, we've been kind of preparing for, um. HB two is the, um. There's a, there's some budgetary pieces to it, but it's primarily, a chunk of it affects schools, it's connected to. Um, not having, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, uh, programs. And, uh, not having contracts. That are with vendors that have provisions that are connected to, uh. Uh, DEI, uh, goals. So something like, uh, having contracts where we might favor one, uh, company over another company as a result of their kind of characteristics that. Get up with their ownership or something. Veteran owned, well, I mean, in this case, that particular status is not one of the statuses that, that they will are.
Women owned, but not me.
Uh, this orientation is amongst those that I think gender might be in there too. So you couldn't favor, um. Let me check on the gender piece, but you can't, I can, I can say for sure, like, you couldn't favor. A company over another, couldn't give them like a point in the bidding process. Uh, based on race, uh, sexual orientation. I'll check on the gender piece, uh, whether or not you can say we're, we were, you know, favor of. Female company. Uh, so we, at the, at the, so this requires us, and maybe actually, yeah, you'll pull this up. See if I can get, share the slides that I've got, I gave you the. All a couple-page brief on this, but. So just really quick, and this will help people at home to kind of feel for, so, um, so HB two does, that's the main rush of HB two. Uh, it requires us to, to do this contract review. To, uh, certify to the state. The, under the law, this, the, the final certification must be done by, uh, September thirtieth. However, in order for the Department of Education to report to the state by September thirtieth. They want the schools to report to the Department of Education by September fifth. Certify and report that the. That we don't have anything in conflict with it, so it's a certified report then, going forward. We would have no new contracts with, with DEI provisions, uh, and that we should be doing a. Program review to look at whether or not we have. Programs that, that specifically. A outcomes for certain groups, character, certain groups with certain characteristics. The, um, as I said before, the deadline for this, for us, the submission deadline is the fifth. Uh, and the, uh, for the state, it is, um, everything's supposed to be wrapped up in the court of central legislature by September thirtieth. We. You know, these are the types of things that they're looking to do, the, and the kind of purist statements. Um, of the legislation that want, um, you know, and, um. DEI-related, uh, trainings. Uh, if, now we are able to. I think part of what you're going to hear from me and part of the kind of legal analysis is that we're still able to do. A lot of stuff that would be around, uh, students and making sure that students have a sense of belonging. Uh, I think it's the stuff that would be problematic, stuff that is particularly explicitly DEI enlisted. Um, this also comes in hiring practices, similar to like the contracts. We couldn't have, uh, hiring practice that prioritized one group over another. Um, and, uh. And again, contracts, need to make sure that we didn't have anything contracts. To tell you that we do not have any, we're, we're unaware in any of our vendor contracts of any clauses which would trip. So in terms of kind of the, the approach, uh, that I am. Tending to take with this, uh, I'm, well, one thing I'm leaving out of this, which is important, is there is ongoing ACLU litigation. That's kind of parallel to the conversation we were having with, around the federal dollars back in the spring. Um, so the ACLU with several districts have gone for, and the NEA have gone forward. To, uh, request an injunction, uh, from a judge to stop the implementation, uh, of, uh, of this particular, uh. Law, it includes. Uh, their argument includes similar, very similar things, so we talked about during the federal kind of conversation, which was, what do some of these things mean? Uh, and how could they, and because they're not as clear as people would like them to be, uh, would that create additional problems? The, um, what my intent. Is that I'll continue to monitor the litigation. What I have in consultation with legal counsel. There's some, I would say that the, the, um, ACLU is optimistic. That prior to the fifth, that there will be an injunction. And that that injunction, similar to the federal legis- legislation we went through, would apply to all the districts that were a party of the initial ACLU. Case and similar to the feds, all, um, all districts. Who have NEA members as a part of their workforce, and we have NEA members who are a part of our workforce. So we continue to monitor that, uh, and hope that. Where people think that is going is going to come to fruition. Uh, if not, uh, then we would, uh, potentially sign. Send a signed report since we think we are in compliance, uh, but we use this particular. Language would be attached to that report. This comes out of Wadley Starman. Um, just saying that. He would believe that the, that the language is, is ambiguous in his definition of DEI. Uh, and it's vague, um, about what is meant in these DEI-related initiatives, programs, training, policies. Uh, there are school district policies required by state and federal law that may be contrary to these provisions on DEI initiatives. However, I believe the district's contracts are in compliance. So we would, if we submitted. Now, in your briefing, to basically the stick. In this is that the commissioner is ordered through this RSA. Uh, to haul all public funding for schools that are in compliance, um, with this new law. Um, so. This, what is in, and I would say one of the things that's a little bit. Uh, not totally clear, and I think even in our legal opinion. Uh, we're trying to gauge is what are the things that would be under the control of the commissioner to s- to. Stop being sent to us. Uh, and so, right now, we believe the, the, the narrowest reading of the law that really speaks to. Um. It speaks to a few, um, not the core of the money that we bring in. Um, but stuff, uh, and Brian, I want to. Tell me out here, the things I think, based on the board sheet I gave you today, that could potentially be included for. I can pull it back. Put you on the spot.
That is about six hundred thousand dollars. Funds that may or may not be affected.
Are we not? Yeah, we've, so we, the, the, so what most folks believe is that those things. The federal funds, which is the title one, child nutrition, um. Title two for. IDA, that those probably would not fall within this, but the product top ones, sorry. One point, yeah, one point three for the special education fund. And the infrastructure building.
Oh, I see.
So it's still.
Next year is, we'll be still getting those seven hundred thousand a minute.
What are the? What have the? When we look at the, the letter earlier from the feds, there was like a. A, a number you could call forward. Is that, is that similar to, is that, is there a similar mechanic to this?
It exists in the state, there is a number that exists in the state for. So it's a wide range of issues that could be called. So yes, and I suppose. That number could be used for. Supposed or deemed violations of this.
And then the, in the, in the. Uh, earlier one from the feds, I forget the name of the organization, because Java was like, what name? Because it's like, if you're out of compliance, it's kind of, so whatever.
So, so the, um, um. So they would be, they're, but that's a wing of the federal government, and attorneys they're looking for specifically.
Would, would it be interfacing if there was a situation where it would be interfacing with those folks, or would it be definitely the state?
All just state-level legislation. Again, so the commissioner is, the commissioner's responsibility to ensure compliance.
His office.
Her office. Uh, and, um, so her, it's her, her office's responsibility to ensure.
I guess I can see how from a contractual standpoint, someone straightforward to change the wording of legal documents. So that you're no longer using the banned language, so to speak. But I have a lot more concerns about this from a program. Educational standpoint, I think like we coached, Tish and I coached girls on the run. That's now violating gender DEI rules of the state, so we can't do that anymore, and it's like. A running program for kids, it's supposed to build self-esteem, it's, you know. I don't think terribly controversial, but maybe I'm wrong about. It's, you know, I don't think terribly controversial, but maybe I'm wrong about that. And there's so many more examples in all of our schools. Okay, there's that. It was pre pandemic. But I guess my point in seriousness is there's a lot that we do every day in the schools that could very easily be construed as in some way touching on race or gender or gender identity or sexual orientation or disability. All sorts of training to try to make our staff and our kids more aware of how to interact with people, we're just different. And that's a good thing that I don't think we want to back away from. So it's one thing if we're kind of like, well, we're going to reframe it as kindness day. Instead of, you know, learn to be more tolerant of this specific type of human. But then are we to some extent implicit in raising the identity of the people in our buildings, and I'm not comfortable with that. And I know that there's legal implications to all of this and the wrong and unclear political bets. But I guess I wish there was a way for us to kind of pull the line on this stuff. And I know that that puts you into typical legal position. So.
I almost to toggle on what you're saying, I almost feel it's in today's culture. It's impossible to teach, to be in the school system without acknowledging differences amongst students and and teachers and faculty. It's, it's impossible, you can't walk down the street without with without acknowledging that people are different for many different ways.
And we're educators, like we should have people to embrace ideas and differences. I mean, I don't know.
I mean, it's, to me, it's hogwash, for lack of a better word.
I agree with the hogwash.
So I have more so legal liability question. Because so let's say that from disability standpoint, this law actually suppresses conversation around folks' disabilities in conversations. But in thereby as well, put you in violation of IDA in some cases. Doesn't that create a potential liability for school district by actually even signing this?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we're to win this. That's the, that's the, that's the analysis I'm returning is how do you, how do we? There's the yes, yes, the answer to your question, yes. So we, so, so, you know, protective characteristics that they're referring to in the law include gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, race, age, religion, marital status and disability. So, so if.
Which all of us fall under at some point, you know?
So school, so again, so schools cannot create or support programs to get advantages or preferences based on the list of characteristics. Now, you could say, well, it isn't special education inherently. Inherently, it's us doing something unique for somebody based on a characteristic, which is a disability. Same thing with five four. But they were following federal law. So I think this is part of the lawsuit. For the ACLU to say what does, how do you
have your teaser apart?
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think, there's, there's districts around the state who are making the choice to play. We're just going to chase the label. But we're going to finally do, do just not going to have the label that that would flag action. And that, and I think that's kind of the, I don't know, that's the spot that the legislature is supporting, district center around the state. Fortune.
What if somebody decides to, or we're trying, of course.
And so what does it mean? So this is part of, going back to them, so what is, so let's say, so like, you know, so the, the special ed was a really rich one because, you know, huge. And so if you can't answer that question really well, then it makes the other ones, you know, if you can't answer that one, I think it's a way hard because you get into these other, you know, that's why I was revision.
So we have that specific one to hope. It seems so contradictory and can potentially create a lot of.
And I think that's where you're going to see more lawsuits come out of other organizations. Like you're going to have the I mean, there are laws that that support special education, which are contradictory, which is exactly what you're saying. So these organizations that, you know, IDA and all those, I mean, they're under the federal government, so maybe not them, but like, like the disability. Why am I drawing a blank to that association?
Just merit rights, the disability rights in New Hampshire.
Yeah. There's going to be lawsuits with, when this starts affecting the students. Because you are going to, you are going to get a school district that is going to stick to this word for word. Not Portsmouth, because it, we're just not that community. But there will be some, and there will be lawsuits against that school because they didn't follow that. Unfortunately, it's, I see this as a total train wreck. Total train wreck, and I see what could happen is they're throwing, trying to throw a mud against the wall, trying to see what sticks. And and with it is, is just going to be lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit. And the kids are getting hurt over this ultimately, that's what it is. And that's, that's why, just excuse my language, it sucks. You know, I could say a lot worse, a lot worse language, but we're being recorded. It just, it's, it sucks.
I, I have a question, what happens if the ACLU wins the case, then what happens?
Well, right now, it's not even the winning of the case. What, what for us, we're looking for is for the, for the judge in the case to step in and say, okay, this is unclear. We're not ready to, we're not ready to lay it out for you yet. But this September 5th deadline is about to hit, and it's unclear enough for districts, it seems appropriate that we should put a pause on this. While we, the court, determine what is, I mean, because most, because the court doesn't make the law, just tells you what does the law mean? So we are, we, so I think what ACLU is optimistic about is, is that the court will step in, the court will say, all right, pause, everybody pauses. And again, not, I think this will go the same way, sounds like the federal one went, which is the districts that were asked to be part of the lawsuit. And and NEA is part of it too, so everybody, NEA, they're all under NEA, I will say too, that we were not, not explicitly reset to be ACLU. Just that, if that was questioned.
Will the ACLU, will they find out by September 5th?
So we don't know. So, but, but I think that they, it becomes move if, I think they're optimistic that at least that's going to happen. But I don't mean until, because if you go past the fifth, then the help that the injunction is supposed to create, which is not enforcing districts if they're unsure about what they're possibly not doing while it's been there, it's moved in a lot of ways. If the fifth comes, go, because now you've already had that decided. Are you going to take the section? So I think they're optimistic, doesn't mean it's a lock. In a couple of days, we'll have the injunction attempt that will at least hit pause by how it tries to be clarified.
But if it doesn't, you have to know what this would, what actions would like you to take, is that correct? Or are you just, do you have the, you don't need the board?
No, I mean, it is not what I need the board to sign off on, that the, the, it falls to me to report to the commissioner about our level of compliance. And I wanted to make sure that very least you were informed of kind of what's the lay of the land right now, what's the context? And depending on what happens as we approach the fifth, what barring, barring you wanting to jump in a bigger way into that, into that action, what my intent was behalf of the district in response to this request.
So what, what you will do is put in the superintendent's compliance plan?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, I would report, yeah, and just say that we've, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't think that any of our wallets are vague. We also don't think that our contracts are you know, that our contracts are not compliant, we think we're compliant, based on our, based on our understanding of the law. Based on our reading of law.
Do we have any more comments? Oh, Pip?
Hi, thank you. Zach, you just said barring, wanting to jump into the action. And so can I speak to a decision that we made regarding the federal? The federal version of this that I believe we made in non-public?
Anything we announced, I mean, I think we announced.
Yeah, I think we announced it publicly.
Publicly as well, it came out publicly.
Okay, so I just wanted to remind our board that we did vote initially to join the lawsuit against the federal version. So I wonder if there's any interest at this point in doing the same on this level.
And I'll just say, so in, in the case, a little bit different this time. So in the case of the first lawsuit, we were reached out to with a, with a request to see whether or not we were interested in joining. We were not, that didn't happen in this particular case. So we didn't turn down the opportunity to join, we're not offered the opportunity to join. Now, we could, as they move forward, if they wanted to have our involvement, the ways in which we could get involved include as they get into the, into the case, or there might be an opportunity down the road for us to deal with them there. Amicus brief, a friend of, a friend of one of the arguers and say, this is, we want to add our voice to the ACLU and here are our specific concerns and reflect the themes present in ACLU's lawsuit. And here's our, the help of, of in-house legal and, and then, and then Wadley may be able to develop a legal brief if ACLU welcomed it.
I see, okay. So I think I understand right now, it may not be in their best interest for us to join, it sounds like.
Yeah, for whatever reason, they, they connected with the folks they felt were most appropriate to connect with.
Okay, thank you.
But we did not turn them down, it was not an offer we turned in.
Anyone else with a comment? So Superintendent will proceed as presented in this.
And hopefully we're in a spot, and I will say, just going back, you know, just don't, there is language in there around the fact that schools still need to be compliant with federal law. So, so it's a, so that's a little, so that's the out on special net, that's what it will be, it's in that way. And I also don't think that that's the, that's not really the target, you know, this is not kids with disabilities. This is, this is coming after, this is more going after race related stuff first.
But it's fuzzy enough.
But it's, we're, we're, it puts people into interesting situations potentially, yeah.
So is, is your intention, at least based on what you understand of it right now? To avoid changes to curriculum or like activities in the schools based on this? Or do you force the potential have to change?
No, that's what my intention is, is, is that if we had to do some, and I, and I understand words can be powerful, but if we had to do some rewording of something that felt explicitly correct, something that we, that we would reword it. But I don't think, I don't see, I don't think we're in a position where we have things that are sub, are substantively necessarily counted of this, and I think there's ways for us to hold it where it would be if it was. And and simultaneously, I appreciate the spirit of what several were talking about. Since we're an educational institution, we are constantly working, you know, part of our strategic plan is around creating a sense of belonging. And some of that is not just on date, you know, but on very targeted to certain groups of students who may struggle to feel that sense of belonging. I, I just do not see us being away from providing that type of assistance to students because it's just good practice. I think we just have to be careful about how to label those things, that, those one.
Any other comments on that? We're, oh, we have to reopen the public comment, there's no one here to speak, but we'll vote for public comment. And we're ready to adjourn, however, I do have a couple of items, I have that brief on schedule. Appreciate everybody taking the time to be here tonight, this isn't the only special meeting we've had this summer. But so appreciate everybody coming, we have a full house, so that's great. We have the superintendent evaluation, do you want to talk about that?
We just, we have to wrap it up and basically, the only time that we can have another non-public is next Tuesday, which is respond with the so there's lots to discuss, and maybe discuss this, here's evaluation, we're also discussing evaluations going forward. So we need a non-public to discuss all that. It's time to actually discuss it, September 30th feels, starts feeling really late. So we we can wait till September 30th, but I would suggest that if we can do it earlier, a special meeting for now, it might actually be better, so we can just focus on that, talk about it. But not for the year. But it's all depending on what we can be, I guess.
I just to throw one option out, I would love to come by night or to keep a similar night, because when's the reception? What's my, what time is it?
What are you talking about the night? Yeah, the, um, yeah, it's like, the teacher reception is 6:30.
Yes, 5:30 an option for folk.
Yeah, yeah, but we have pizza, usually if we eat that early, we have pizza, but we're going to have food at the reception. So I don't know, how do people feel about 5:30 on the ninth?
I would prefer that to another date, like I'm just struggling to find dates now.
There's one, I would just be, be really careful, I want to make sure we've had at least one year where long before the teachers and now they're, you know, hanging out, we're the hosts and we're not there. An hour, yeah. Half an hour's too short.
Is there any other item on the breakout scheduled for non-public?
There is, I think there is.
Actually for 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Push that one off or?
Yeah, well, that's because there's two hires, new hires. So 5:30 to 6:15, I think 45 minutes would be good, and then not that non-public at 6:15.
That sounds good to me, two, two new hires isn't going to take 15 minutes, possibly.
We don't need 15 minutes, we'll meet him right on the same, I think. What's that?
Well, he has to, and he has to let us know, correct?
What's that?
You want to let us know about the five.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we probably only need about 10 minutes for that.
I think we're, we're on a game.
All right, does everybody think 5:30 on September 9th is a big time?
Yes, thank you. All right, the other thing I had was Monday night, the city council meets and they're going to talk about what we just voted on. Is anybody eligible to go Monday night? I know, I know, I need to ask that people give up another night. Well, let me just leave it at this, if you can go, please go. I'll be there, I'll speak on behalf of our board about how we adopted this paragraph. Anybody else can be there, that would be awesome.
I will start, if you're going to be there, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and please, wait a second. Please, you know, please get up.
I'll be.
Actually, for a public hearing, there's no time limit, so you can speak as long as you want.
They start at seven, right? You might want to look at the agenda and sit down and the agenda that I am missing.
Yeah, so, anyway, if anybody would go, I think we three, we could. Yeah, so anyway, if anybody would go, I think we'd be great. We could support our.
So just, so Paul.
Okay, Patty, can Patty tell Paul that?
Are, are our goals on the website now?
I think the minutes are.
Minutes are, but we don't have them. Yeah, we can change that.
Can we put the goals on them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so anybody else have anything they would like to talk about? Don't forget the signup time if you are interested in running again for school board. I believe it goes till, what did somebody say, since the 16th?
It was told the 16th.
Okay.
I trust our city clerk's office does that.
So far, no one has signed up to run for school. We need five people.
Day one, first opportunity with.
And also anyone, if you weren't here before, if you want to put your sign in my yard, feel free, have a good night, Jason.
Thank you, too.
Does a rooster have to move in order for that to happen or is that?
Not moving, but I will tell you, someone put a person that shall remain nameless for the pro that sign around my rooster's neck has been on the night one night. We know who it was. And I'm like, oh, is this game on? Because I'm ready to show up with that. If that's the game we're playing.
Somebody, what a persuasion that's normal set up.
That follows our household.
Germans, they have.
Oh, okay.
Do we have?
You have a marching to Lisa and Byron. Everybody, yes.
Yes.